...of the Edison Building. Present at the Boyd Cabel is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the Board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Smithner.
Here.
Ms. Seelinger.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
2.01, approval agenda.
There is one change. Item 3.01 per professional week has been added to the agenda.
No approval.
Seconded.
Then moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Announcements and communications, 3.01 per professional week.
Yes, this week is per professional week, and this is an opportunity for us to thank the many individuals that serve that role for our district, both in general ed and in special education, and we really appreciate all of their effort. And without them, we would not be able to do the work that we do every day. So this is an opportunity for us to recognize them and thank them for their service. And then we have also posted some information on social media as well, and if you looked at the all staff emails that you received today on the cabinet update, it was also mentioned in there as well. So we want to thank them for their service to the district.
High student achievement, 5.01 graduate profile discussion. Is there any else?
Yes, if you look up on the TV screen, this is the agenda we have for tonight. We would like, I'm going to have Heather kind of go through the thought exchange and give you a quick summary of that. It's been a few weeks since we've had the individuals from Thought Exchange present the findings, so she can go through that with you rather quickly. And then I will share some information about the work that the leadership group, which is lead principals, directors, and supervisors, we spent some time as a large group looking through the results of the exchange and came up with some information. And then the cabinet today took information from the Thought Exchange, information from the leadership meeting, and came up with draft graduate profiles. So we'll review those, and then we plan into breaking into two small groups, and the groups are listed up there on the screen. We'll spend about 30 minutes looking at the draft profile. Each group will have about three profile statements to look at, and the goal is to look at the information collected from the Thought Exchange, the leadership work, and then see if we captured all the input that we received from the, our stakeholders through Thought Exchange and through the leadership work. And then we'll come back together again as a large group and discuss all six draft statements that we came up with. So I'm going to turn it over to Heather and have you kind of walk us through the Thought Exchange.
Thank you. So the first thing I want to talk about is just a really brief overview of Thought Exchange, because it was a few weeks ago that they presented the information to the Board. But earlier this fall, we had a 10-day period in which we surveyed or requested thoughts from community members, staff, students, and parents. And during that time, we had more than 1,300 participants. They provided more than 2,000 thoughts, and they starred or rated those thoughts. They provide more than 34,800 stars to the thoughts. So the first piece that I want to share with you, knowing that, is we asked two questions. The first one was what knowledge, skills, and experience do our graduates need to be successful in life, learning, and work? And if you look at this document that is in front of you, the colored bar graph, this shows that there were four top themes that Thought Exchange determined based on the feedback. How these themes were determined were based on key words or key phrases. So common themes for each category subsequently fall, and they're on the back. So the most thoughts were given to student skill. And when they, when Thought Exchange designed this with student skill and theme, the sub-themes that fell within that were thoughts about life skills and financial literacy, communication and public speaking, critical thinking and analysis, reading and writing, and problem solving. Same thing for experiential learning, student quality, and student development. So again, Thought Exchange took a look at all of those thoughts, the 2,182 thoughts, took all of the relevant thoughts, and that's where you see this graph and what, on the backside, what those pieces mean. This is what our principals looked at. Superintendent, we'll get to that in a moment. So that's one way of looking at the data, that our principals could look at this. I do want to note that this information will be available to the public on a website. We're still finalizing the website because we're answering some of the questions that our community had, so we want to make sure we have all those answers ready before we post live. So this will be a public-facing website, so people will be able to look at this data as well. Another way to look at it, and you'll see this in our draft, but is this document right here, which is the report that Thought Exchange provided for us. And so this document, what it shares is the findings from each question. So we asked the two questions. The insight overview doesn't look at thoughts as much as it looks at the starring pattern, so the really, the more popular answers and what people really agreed with. And so the first item, or the first characteristic that they pulled out based on starring patterns was communication and public speaking, followed by life skills and financial literacy, then critical thinking and analysis, and then teamwork and interpersonal skills. And in the gray box, what you'll find is their synopsis after reading through thousands of thoughts, just basically, it just kind of lays it out there in terms of what the main theme was. The box with the star and then the little person in it, that's an actual thought that was provided by somebody that participated in this Thought Exchange. So in looking at that, those are the insight overviews for the first question, that's what we're focusing on tonight, but the second question are pages six and seven. And those are our top thoughts or questions from our community about what are we currently doing? The specific question was what questions or thoughts do you have about how we are currently preparing our graduates for success? And so there were three key themes there, but you'll see that we've incorporated, some of these things will be incorporated with our graduate profile. These weren't necessarily to drive the graduate profile work, but rather, here's where we're at right now to where we'd like to see you go. So that's really how the Thought Exchange process worked.
Any questions on that piece?
So the orange star, what is indicative of what?
The orange star is indicative of the largest, or of the rating. So if somebody provided, for example, the thought that you see with homework assessment and grading, that means that there were, it just looks like a small number, 17 people had provided this with stars. Overall, the average was 4.4 stars, meaning some people gave it a five or a five. Most popular is what people would give it as.
Any other questions? Okay, so the next document I'll call to your attention is... I hope you all have one that looks like this. Okay, so what we did is, these were our four top themes we broke. The leadership team, like I said, lead principals, supervisors, directors, and it worked out that we had two cables per one of these themes. And what they were asked to do is look at the information that was in the Thought Exchange, but even dig deeper and read the, all the comments that were, for example, on this one that Heather shared with you, what's in the kind of the quote, that's one of the thoughts that were stated. They had the ability to go in and read the thoughts that went with each of the categories. So they dug deeper into, to help them, because there were statements in this, and well, what do they mean by that? And they could go in and read the actual statements that individuals posted to help them get an understanding of what people were talking about. So they did all of that work and came up with, we got two more pieces of paper, all of this, okay? So for example, communication, collaboration, empathy, so that, these were the key words or themes that they picked up digging deeper into all of the input that we got, okay? So then today, we took that information and also looked at the Thought Exchange and came up with this document. And this is just a draft of suggested graduate profile. There are six key areas: ethical leader, critical thinker, skilled communicator, effective collaborator, resilient learner, success-ready individual, and then the descriptor of those categories was based on all the input that we received from Thought Exchange and the work that the leadership did. So we believe we captured everything in the Thought Exchange and through the leadership work in this document. So what I would like us to do is, let me get my, this group here on the left, which is Group A, has 1, 2, 3, first three of these on this document. The other side has 4 through 6, okay? We're going to give you about 30 minutes to look at this information, look at the information from the Thought Exchange, I think, and this document, and see, do you think we've captured all of the input that we received from all the individuals that took part in the exchange? I don't think we want to...
You must work backwards from this.
Right, exactly. I don't think tonight, right now, we want to wordsmith things. Did we capture all of the main ideas, okay? And then we can roll up the sleeves and wordsmith them. But right now, in your group work, did we capture all the important information that was given to us through the Thought Exchange and through the work with the leadership? Okay? Any questions on that?
So some people need to move. Is that why?
Nope. We have these, Group B is on this side, some of us will move and sit on the inside.
Chairs on the side.
Yeah, we'll sit on the inside, and this group will have that side, okay? I make sure somebody is a note taker for your group, okay? And then like I said, we will come back together at 6:15 to discuss what we found so far.
We talked about kind of the hows with this one. Curriculum instruction to drive this in an age appropriate manner was a piece that we talked about. We also talked about, we believe it's essential that the school district embraces different points of view in order to meet critical thinker, but how do we implement that? So, we did talk about the pedagogy and how do you teach this to our staff and to our students? So, while we agree to this, we want to make sure we add creativity in some fashion and then we had more discussion on that.
Deep.
We didn't give any data later.
We did not follow directions.
Yeah, I noticed. We picked up on that one right away.
You're being creative.
We even have some suggestions for yours.
Well, thank you.
Just kidding.
There is one.
Any questions on their number two? Okay?
And then the third one, we nailed it. So, school communicator, no, I'm just, school communicator, we didn't have any changes. We felt this definition really reflected code switching, which is what we had talked about in revealing all of the information from our community and our parents and students. So, we didn't have any suggestions with this particular profile.
Any questions on their third one? Okay? Well, I will summarize ours really quickly. We were okay with everything on ours.
No wonder it was so quiet.
But, we actually had some conversation about, we think we've gotten there when all of this information is taught in every classroom across the system at every grade level. Age appropriate, of course. For example, if I'm teaching math, Johnny, you have some coins, make 55 cents, okay? Two quarters and a nickel. Suzie, five dimes and five pennies. At a very young age, that is hitting critical thinker, a lot of those skills, so, yeah. So, we really think that our goal would be that, because we had a conversation about are there certain content areas that can do this better or should do it? And we said, no, really, this should be across all the content areas. And something I did share with the group that you probably didn't hear is, once we land on this profile, then we'll establish goals and measurements for those goals. There was a question, well, how are you going to measure some of these things? We're not measuring the graduate profile and the descriptors of graduate profile. We're going to measure the goals that we establish. However, what I envision happening is, once that work is done, I will spend time working with a group of teachers, probably may take a full year, that they are going to create a teacher profile. What characteristics and skills do they have to have to help our kids accomplish these things? Okay? Once that's done, we'll work with the group of administrators to create a leader profile. As a leader, what do you have to do in order to help teachers achieve their profile? So, but that's probably.
Certain, certain, define what the role is, there'll be certain emphasis placed on that role.
Right. But, that's probably work that will, probably the teacher and leader profile will have to be, start this year, but probably won't be completed until the next school year. But, I think we can still do the goals and measurements without having those in place, but we'll be working on those. What am I missing?
We did talk about the, in the backup material, the failure mindset versus the growth mindset and the use of that term. It was a discussion, I don't know. Growth mindset obviously was kind of the buzzword of the district. Failure mindset, I said I felt it was, to me, it meant that it was teaching kids that it was okay to fail, that that's part of the process.
That's what happens in science all the time.
Okay? Anything else, team?
I have one question. So, when we're talking about how, at some point, what kinds of things we'd like our teachers to do, how do we tie that in with where they get their teacher training? Because will they, you know, is this something that's going to be kind of intrinsic or natural to them, or is this going to be stuff that needs to be taught at the university level before they become teachers? I mean, I'm looking far out.
Yeah, I guess I haven't thought about that far out. I thought about whatever we as a system are going to have to do to help teachers accomplish that profile.
About like, helping kids become critical thinkers, that's part of the class tool observation that we do when we go into classrooms. So, how to instructional coaches and building principals, give feedback and provide support so that we become better at analysis and inquiry and those kinds of things in the classroom. So, it could be, we have a really solid teacher, but we are providing more professional development to develop that particular skill to support this.
And there may be things that come up through that profile that we want to embed in the class tool.
Right.
To be sure that, that's what we're, that's what we're asking, or that's what we and our teachers.
But, I think in answer to Julie's question, I think we can have conversation with places like Winona State University, they produce a lot, I mean, we get a lot of teachers from that institution. So, I think we can try to partner with them to influence how they prepare teachers. And probably where we'd have a better opportunity to do that would be in the graduate induction program where they're in our building, going through some training, and we can just try to have some of that implemented in the curriculum that they use to, for that program for teachers that are getting their masters. And then we're in conversation with a couple other institutions that want to partner with us to do something similar. So, that would be another group that provides education to our teachers too. But, I mean, we can't force them to do that, but we can request to partner with them to do that.
Mike, back, I was just sharing this group back, I think it was in the 90s, maybe it was in the 80s, we had, it was about a three-year critical and creative thinking staff development thing. And we had curriculum with the staff development, we had big groups, working, small groups. So, we have all kinds of resources about how you can help teachers learn to help their kids become more critical and creative in their thinking. And it's fun, that's the thing. But, what it basically boils down to is, how are you asking questions?
Yes. And that's a big part of the class, well, you know, that's part of the class tool.
That's not that complicated to get across, and you can do that in your subject area. So, and the good news is, it's cheap, it's easy, it's fun. And so, I think our staff can get that pretty quick. And I think we've got hundreds, thousands probably of good examples that are already happening in the classrooms now.
Yeah.
Also, these are, this is really good.
Well, I was, I was very happy with our work today.
Man. No, I don't think it's a surprise, but I mean, it's really good.
Perfect example of collaboration.
Yes, it was. So, next question. So, it sounds like we need to have a little bit of conversation about your couple recommendation for changes. But then, this is based on all the feedback, but as a board member, is there something that you believe our graduates need to have that isn't covered, that needs to be added? Doesn't, it wasn't part of the thought exchange or anything like that, but something that you believe should be in there somewhere?
I have a question. So, are you thinking like, I mean, we've talked about technology a lot. So, in terms of student skills and using data and analyzing it, would you say, I mean, does that need to be a specific part of this? Or, do you think that that is included just in the overall description that we've seen here, is there's a place for that?
Yeah, because what we talked about, that example and then also the life skills one, you know, because it was mentioned in the feedback, financial literacy, but we thought, well, that's a life skill, but then do you list that? Do you list all the other life skills that our kids need? I mean, and I think that your example was perfect, that that could be one example to fit under there, but there are others that, not just in the area of technology. So, we thought if we started doing that, then you, these descriptors would just be huge. So, it would be part of it.
And it seems to me these details would come in more under the how and the what are we going to do in order to make sure that our students do meet these descriptors when it's actually.
Right.
Yeah, because it might be a how, but, you know, something along the lines of cultural awareness.
Is there something that, I think it's kind of under the resilient, not resistive. Resistant, so resilient there. But, allowing kids or letting kids, students figure out how to change, you know, change directions or, I don't know, again, many of you know, I have kids who have, you know, recently graduated from college and then moved on into their own lives and navigating, you know, I think, with my own kids, but, you know, you kind of go through high school and go through college, you kind of get on a path, and you take this path, and then, you know, you're out there, kind of like, all by yourself, and then you're kind of like, whoa, what do I do now? Kind of, you know? And one of my children didn't completely understand, and maybe this is just life, but didn't really understand that, well, he can make whatever choice, you know, he wants at this point. And, you know, if things aren't, you know, so, the, so adding to the resilient learner that, you know, even if you're working hard, you're persistent to achieve, achieve something, I mean, you still have to have flexibility in life. You still need to be flexible, you still need to, you know, because life's going to come and something's going to happen, but, you know, that's okay. And so, I mean, is there, is there, and I don't know, I don't know how you build that into graduating from high school, but, but just letting kids know that, you know what, have a plan, but, you know, sometimes the plan doesn't work out, you gotta get a different plan for something. I don't know.
That's a really good point, and I think, you know, that's what we want for all of our kids, for sure. I think it's a really good point. It seems to me that, that what you're saying is kind of implanted in a bunch of these, resilient learner and the critical thinker and the, you know, people take feedback, they make different choices, they have options.
Oh, yeah, and maybe, and maybe what I'm thinking is, because, yes, they are kind of, but maybe just maybe point blank a little bit more, but, yeah, you have options, you have choices.
Part of, because learning is lifelong. Part of it is when you're going to get out of high school or college or whatever, and, you know, it's okay, to fail there is safe. There's really no real consequence to failure in the schools, in the school setting. I mean, yeah, maybe you get a C or instead of a B or an A, or maybe you even get an F and fail a class. But, when you're in life, and, you know, and every day, you're, now you're confronted making your own personal life decisions, and you make one that ends up not being, has a consequence to that decision. Now, you're faced alone to face the consequence of that decision, and it's not, and it may not necessarily be, you know, failure takes on a different meaning to you, and all of a sudden, you are really on your own and totally responsible for that consequence. There isn't anybody who's going to, you know, reach in there and save you or pull back and save you. I think that's what you're trying to describe. And that is, that's just, that's life, that's life experience. So, the question is, the question is, will you think or remember something you learned alone and wish, oh, it's now time for me to apply this particular way of thinking to that? I didn't really think about that way, you know, but I remember somewhere along the path, you know, somebody trying to put that in my head, and maybe, you know, somehow, life experience will actually turn them, turn that switch on at that point, which they never did, they never did in high school or college perhaps.
So, does this capture that? Maybe, I guess I kind of think this might fall under this. Applies information and problem solving skills to address evolving real world issues. So, that, to me, what you're describing could, I mean, it's obviously individuals' real world issues. It doesn't have to happen while you're in school. It could be five years after you've graduated, and, oh my, I gotta do something. Hopefully, because we've helped to be a critical thinker and given you the skills to do that, you'll be able to solve that problem you have, and now I gotta, hey, I gotta do something now. I can't, I don't know, I guess I just.
I see where you're coming from, Mike, and I, I agree. But, when I was reading through critical thinker, I wasn't, when I read real world issues, I was thinking bigger than myself.
Oh, right.
And, and, you know, but, it is a real, myself is a real world issue.
But, I mean, I, to me, it defines both. It may be my individual real world issue, or it may be.
A bigger.
Hunger, the hunger, you know, our society, our country has a hunger, I mean, something that, you know, big.
Scale, yeah.
Yeah, scale, question of scale, right.
Well, I think on some of these student development points on the back of this sheet, too, it talks about responsible and accountable people here, and empathy and emotional intelligence, and maybe one of the things that we really need to teach kids, leading by example, if nothing else, is how do you form a relationship, you know? How do you build a support community so that you're not all on your own when you're out there, but you can be part of a larger group of people who support and care for each other? I have to ask the school district to do that.
I feel like the changing course part of this might be under resilient learner, where you're able to weather changes in circumstance or something like that.
And upon reflection?
Yeah. Well, and it does say engages in reflection and accepts feedback, that could lead to a course change.
We've all, we've all could say a personal example of that probably. Ooh, reflecting, I wish I wouldn't have done that, ooh, I guess I won't do that again. Oh, if I, if you'd just let me wake up, I'll never drink that much again in my life.
I really like how, how these things are so well integrated, you know, so it's not a question of you do this one thing here and you do this one thing there, but it's more, it's more like a tapestry, and we're trying to look at the big picture right now.
So, let's go back to Ann. Based on the two examples we thought were, that might fit, are you okay with that, or do you, would you like us to call it out more specifically in one of the areas?
I guess I would say, probably do not need to call it out specifically in one of the two areas, if when we're actually getting to the implementation piece, that it's not, that because it's not spelled out in here that we've forgotten about it.
Okay.
You know, so, but yeah, I, I think it's okay, but just, I mean, I, yeah, so just, so in the implementation piece.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Any, I'll ask the question again, is there anything else that as a board member you feel needs to be included, that you don't think is covered anywhere?
We do that after, remember? We do that, we all collectively agree, and then we individually.
I don't have anything that I think is missing. I'm kind of slightly intrigued and sort of thoughtful about the inclusion of life skills, and particularly that, the specific of the financial literacy. I'm just, I don't know that I can wrap my head around that as an individual, because I sort of feel the tension between schools should do everything and prepare our students, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and the why our parents doing their, their job, right, of teaching their children life skills. And so, I, I, I won't fight that being in there, but I'm just a little, I'm not sure how I, I feel about what exactly we mean, because I see only this financial literacy as, as what I would term a life skill in the materials that we have in front of us. And then, the five bubbles about, well, yeah, the one about credit card debt, that was, that was, so, anyway, that was just a rumination.
Yeah, I would, there was more mention of budgeting and financing as far as, there weren't any, a lot of other specific statements about life skills there. I think there were a couple, I can't remember what the other, there was another one I know for sure, but it may be mentioned just one or two times, but financial letters or budgeting and things like that came up numerous times under life skills category.
Did anything come up about how we would like our students to be mentally and physically healthy when they leave us?
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was.
Is that under student development?
I don't think that came more from leadership than from the quality of student behavior.
There was a big distinction there.
Yeah.
Emotional, physical.
Yeah.
I guess to Deborah, I told my group, group probably exactly the same thing that you said, it's like, well, our parents doing kind of, and I struggle with the financial piece. However, if, you know, if we're true to, you know, finding out what, what the people in Rochester want, and if a lot of them said, well, one, maybe we don't feel like we're adequately prepared to teach our kids this, I don't know why they wouldn't be, but maybe they don't feel like they are, and this is something that they want, at least something rudimentary from the school district, maybe then, you know, we're, you know, we're not the, how many thousands people answered? You know, a couple thousand, thirteen hundred or what?
How many high school kids have checking accounts?
You know, and, I mean, it's, you know, so.
Their parents.
So, maybe, maybe we, you know, maybe it's kind of not really our decision. I mean, if we're really looking at, if we're really trying to take them to account, what, what the people want.
My youngest son graduated in 2009, and he took a class, I believe it was titled Money and You at the time, and that was one of the most practical classes he's had. I mean, it was just really nitty gritty, how do you do this, how do you do that? I mean, there was a certain amount of economics in it, and budgeting, and just really, really practical stuff. It was an elective. I mean, it was something that he chose.
I mean, there, I mean, there is the elective in there right now about parents, and it's like, yeah, I really encourage my children to take it, but they.
But, we're hearing from the community, they think, no, we should encourage them to, we should mandate that they take it.
Well, that's what that's basically saying.
And I'm, and I'm, I'm fine with that. And, you know, and again, I'm just, I'm, I struggle with it, but again, if we're really trying to find out what is it that, you know, the, the people who are looking at the graduates of our school district are thinking, and it seemed like it was a really big thing that kind of bubbled up. It's like, well, all right then, that's something, you know, if we would, we would gloss over it, and be like, well.
I can remember an example, going to my son in college and a group of guys, and I think they were seniors in college, we were out someplace, we had dinner, whatever, and there would come, I asked people, you know, to do the tip, you know, how much tip, I always might say, how much tip, can somebody tell me 10%? 10%? So, I gave it, I made it easy, 10% of whatever, and I got answers all over the board, and there hasn't, none of them have the answer.
They didn't get their cell phones out?
They didn't, you know.
Might not be a double attack, yeah. Double attack.
Double, they would do, they'd give you answers, like, I'm thinking, man, we're not teaching, even in college, we're not teaching, most of them didn't even have a checkbook till they got to college or, you know.
What's a checkbook?
Yeah, well, today, yeah, today, you know, our card, you know, and I can remember my son saying, when he kept overrunning, he goes, well, since I have money in there, you know, the bank says I have this balance, so I assume it was there, as he kept over, you know, overdoing it. He was a slow learner, but, I tell you, he did figure that out, he did figure it out eventually when he had a bill, and I said, that's your bill, it's not mine. He thought it was time to learn that, learn that lesson, but, we, I think it's a good thing, I think, people do want the kids to go out in high school and do kind of basic, kind of a basic thing like, you know, do you have the money or no, or don't you? Do you know that for sure?
Or, if you really want to be a teacher, do you really want to incur $150,000 of stupid debt? Moving on.
Sure, you do. Just think of all the liings that you, difference you're making in children's lives over here.
I think because, I totally agree with Ann saying that, you know, that the community is marked as something of importance. I think it's interesting that, though, that it plays a part in question one and question two, and we haven't really discussed the theme, the other themes, which I know we're not just necessarily part of the graduate profile, but we haven't discussed the homework assessment rating and the trade vocation home rating either. So, I just want to make sure that, while everything is represented, that those other thoughts for the homework, et cetera, and the trade, et cetera, were also floating.
I may be a little pious guy right now, but it seems to me that if our community is saying this is how we want our kids, this is what we want our kids to look like when they graduate, that it would be okay down the road for the district to say, absolutely, we agree, let's work together to do that. And so, maybe there's more involvement with families and with other communities, this cradle to career thing. Maybe there are things here that the community can help us do in raising all of our children together. But, I think it's a good reflection of, as you said, Ann, what the community wants, but I'm not sure that the district has to say, we guarantee you that we will teach all this stuff in isolation. Come on in and help us.
Right.
Like, from the personal finance one, having been a junior achievement volunteer myself, that's kind of what that does, is volunteers go into the classrooms and teach some of the basic financial skills. I went to Outlaw's a number of times doing that.
Well, or it's something to that, well, all right, so if everyone now is taking finance somewhere, then there's potentially other classes that, you know, kids aren't going to take.
Yeah.
And it's like.
But, it could also be incorporated into curriculum.
Right.
All the students, they're required to take economics for graduation, right?
Yeah, and, and it kind of is a little, I mean, I hate to go back to my same example. I mean, I've been in elementary classrooms where the kids have laminated coins, and, okay, you bought this and it cost this, so, how much change do you have? I mean, they're, they're doing some of that, but I think it can be incorporated in math courses and other courses. I don't think we have to just say, every high school kid has to take a finance class before you can grad, I mean, we could say that, but I think we'd be better off trying to incorporate it in some of the other content areas.
Real, because they're real world examples at the end of the day.
Right.
Probably the number one complaint about math classes, how does this apply to me?
Right. So, any other comments before I move into the next step?
My only one comment is, Gary, you gotta start tipping more than 10%.
That's, that's.
Very good.
So, let's go back to your recommendation to change ethical leader to ethical contributor.
Yeah.
It sounds like everybody likes that idea, so we'll make that change.
I like that because that's.
Okay? And your next, your other recommendation was somehow fifth creativity in the critical thinker part. So, do you have a suggestion for that?
General suggestion, applies information, creative thinking, and problem solving skills to address evolving real world issues. So, adding creative thinking after, in the first one.
Okay. Did everybody catch that, or do I need to, we all right with that?
First one.
All right. Very good. And I think that's going to have a change, change you recommended, right?
I have a question for Heather. You said that you figured out what we needed to do over here with dark three, so did you have some changes you wanted to recommend?
No, I believe Debbie.
No, I believe Deborah hit on it. The one thing that we talked about was using the word failure and accepting failure. And you talked about that under resilient learner, but you, I believe, mentioned it might have been in the success ready individual, but we just wanted that word incorporated somewhere. We thought it fit more with your topic.
Which one did you have? That one in the header?
Well, we had jotted it down underneath resilient learner, a bit of susceptible to fail, productive struggle piece, but I'm not sure. I can't remember where Deborah said they.
We had, we just discussed, we just discussed it in the supporting materials.
Stay, stay within the boundaries. They were creative when outside the boundaries.
Yes. So, do we want to try to incorporate that in their resilient learner?
Well, I mean.
Since you got into our business, did you have a suggestion on how we should incorporate it?
When I think about that, I think about years ago when we talk about data and failure and difficulty as feedback. Is there a way to include something like that in here? Failure and difficulty in life is also feedback that we learn from.
How about, we could say engages in reflection and accepts failure and feedback from the base rules?
So, where. I think the community is going to really have a, have a difficult time understanding what you mean accepting failure. Like I congratulate, I don't need to see an A in this.
I mean, I think we have to accept failure. Failure is a, is a, is something that happens along the continuum of learning, but failure is not the end.
Right, right.
Failure is just a new beginning.
So, how about engages in reflection of failure?
A safer new beginning.
Well, failure, I mean, failure, that's where you learn the most.
Hell, yeah.
We were reflecting on it. Okay, am I any wrong with that?
That's some thought exchange here.
Okay, so I, so I'm just saying, this is where it appears in, under student development, resilience and failure mindset. So, I don't know if you, whoever, I was a Catholic or maybe you can say, where are those bubbled up from, that term?
That term came from the thought exchange.
From the thought exchange.
I have a suggested additional sentence on resilient learner. What if it says accepts failure and course changes as opportunities for growth?
About setbacks.
Setbacks.
Failure is, as an indicator, a need for change in direction or change, you know, failure is an indication of change, you know?
Right.
That you need to change. Something, something has to change.
What did you think, or I like that?
Accepts productive struggle. Somehow we read that for productive struggle on the other.
Amy, can you read yours a bit, please?
Accepts failure and course changes as opportunities for growth.
There's opportunities for life.
So, what do you, course changes, you said?
Meaning, I'm going this direction now.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm just wondering, well, they.
They're going to say courses like.
Yeah, I'm more than, yeah.
Okay.
So, can we think of a different?
Setbacks and.
So, setbacks was used, what did you say?
I just said.
Directional changes, productive struggle.
Struggles and setbacks.
Productive, what'd you say?
I just was, can we just put productive struggles somewhere in there?
Okay, because that, that's like.
Yeah, I don't know that everybody knows what that is.
Oh, I see you don't like.
Education.
How about setbacks and struggles?
Yeah, it is.
Struggles and setbacks, maybe just struggles.
This is what we want to see as a result. Don't you think that somehow they would have been able, have been taught how you deal with failure and how you learn from it without being specific and as a specific thing here? Work hard and persist. So, when you work hard and you persist, persisting might, to me, persisting can be overcoming failure or.
Maybe it says persists through struggle.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I somehow added after persist, through something, through something to achieve academic.
Persist through failure.
Or if you just, sort of what Amy was saying.
I don't, I don't, I think we're almost supposed to, that the failure is not the worst thing that can happen to you. Not, failing in something is not the worst thing that can happen to you. In this, in this country or in this society, in other countries, I feel you might lead to actually have a lot more severe consequences.
Well, unexpected outcomes.
We've got it over here now.
Oh, you got it?
We've got it.
Okay, let's hear it.
I like unexpected outcomes better than setbacks.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
Aren't you a glass?
No.
Well, I Googled them.
Want to move over here?
Amy, communal.
Okay, read, read what you have, Amy.
No, Jean.
Oh, Jean.
Accept, accept setbacks as opportunities for growth and learning.
That's cool.
Accepts.
Setbacks.
So, you take the word failure out?
Why can't we just use the word failure? Accepts failure as an opportunity for whatever it was you said.
As a new opportunity.
As a new opportunity.
Well, it may not even be as strong as failure though, right? It might just be, I hit a bump in the road. Okay, that's an opportunity, not a, ooh, I stopped.
Okay, so would you add that sentence to the end?
I would, yeah.
Okay. Accepts setbacks as opportunities for growth, right?
And learning.
We have two things in there. We got to change the word.
Okay.
We have two what?
We have two accepts in that, so we got to change one of those accepts because we say engages in reflection and accepts feedback and then we're also accept, so.
About views, views, setbacks.
Yeah.
We're going to get a word to him after.
Yeah.
Okay. Views setbacks as opportunities for growth and learning.
Yep.
Everybody okay with that?
Could you say views or views?
Views, views.
Views or views.
See, like you see, yeah.
I'm watching you.
Views is when you can.
Because we like this, we like this thing.
Okay. Last thing. Here. Our thought was that we would, now that we have these finalized, we'd put it out again as a quick thought exchange to say, here's what we came up with, what do you think? Or do you not want to do that?
So, what are your thoughts and our thoughts of your thoughts?
I think we did, I think it would be good.
I didn't think that'd be really good.
To see if we, asking our stakeholders, we captured what you told us. Hopefully, we won't get, the only concern, the only concern about that is that you could have a whole group of different people that didn't go out the first time, no, wait a minute, you should go this direction. I mean, so, we have to be ready that there may be some that are off a little bit, but hopefully, I think.
Well, we might learn something new then.
There, maybe some people won't accept our divergent thinking.
Yeah, they could. That's true.
Well, maybe how we ask the questions.
Right.
Not did we, but what are the strengths of this approach?
Right. We'll work with, we'll work with them to create the questions, but basically, I think, I think we even might have told the public that we would put it out there just to kind of let them see it. And then, once we get that, we probably should get together again. We don't have, we could probably even do it at a regular meeting. We don't have to do another study session to do that, but we can just quickly give you a summary of what the second thought exchange on this came up with. And then, if there's something there that's really totally different than what we have so far, we may have to do a study session just to see if we, how we want to, how or if we want to incorporate that.
How about this? What if, if it is okay and it just, what comes back says, hey, they're in, we're in sync with what thinking we do. I mean, but there, if it's not, that's going to lead to a long discussion and that maybe triggers, triggers the special, you know, session.
Yeah, I agree.
If they don't, if they don't agree with this, because we'll spend a lot of time at a regular board meeting on that one subject if we, if we don't come back and maybe ratify or could, you know.
Yeah, I think we just need to see what comes back before.
Yeah, I think if it's not too far off from what we're at, we can just bring it out to get, I, I think the board needs to formally approve these before we move forward. But I think if the second thought exchange is kind of like way out there a little bit, then we'll have to do a study session to review that. But if it's fairly close and just a little tweak here and there, I think we can just bring that to you at a regular meeting and say.
Here's an update.
Here's an update. Can you approve it so we can move on? Okay?
Is that it?
Yep. I thank you. Good discussion. I personally want to thank the cabinet. You worked, I worked very hard this afternoon to, to look at all this information and come forward with six areas, I guess, you can follow. So, thank you for that. And Chair, if you want to.
You're adjourned at 7:03.